Seven oh one, I'm gonna call to order the January eleventh, twenty twenty-two regular planning board meeting. I'm gonna take a roll call vote. Jim Hogan.
Here.
Theo Knoll.
Here.
Megan Minasali.
Here.
Bill Spalding.
Here.
All right, Bill, I've made you co-host. Erin, or is Susan gonna join us tonight, or is she? Okay.
No, she's not. I'm gonna take notes for her.
All right, sounds good. Um, all right. Consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view in or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the provided link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, may you may use the provided dial-in number and meeting code. Please only use dial-in or computer, not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. The location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and/or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability or require information or materials in an alternate format, or you require any other accommodations, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Arnold, town engineer, at seven eight one two four six six three zero eight, as far in advance of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to provide an accessible, to remove an accessible barrier for you. Item number two, approval of meeting minutes. We don't have those completed yet, so we're gonna work on that and get them in our next meeting. Susan had a little difficulty with the length of the last meeting trying to put everything in order, so we're gonna hold off on that. Item number three, Clyde Court update, extend the tri-party agreement. Attorney McGrail, I see you're on.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board. With me tonight is Matthew Cullen, on behalf of one oh seven Prospect LLC, Clyde Court. And we're here, you know, as we're supposed to, to give you an update, kind of a status report on the subdivision, and also to request an extension, extension under the time to complete with, of the tri-party agreement that we've executed with the board in the bank. So quite, it's been, I think, a pretty good process with with my client, Matt Cullen, in the construction of the subdivision. There's been relatively few problems. He's been very proactive and communicating with the board when, you know, potential issues arise. And construction is proceeding. Two houses have been built and complete and actually sold. And people are living there now, coordinating with DPW on municipal services for those folks. And basically, we entered a tri-party agreement with the board to complete the infrastructure of the subdivision. We'd like to give you a status report on that, if we may, and then talk to you about a possible extension of time. So if I could share my screen, Mr. Chair, is that okay?
Sure, do you have, can you do that?
Saying I'm disabled participant.
Now, if you're the host, I think you can.
There, try that now.
Oh, good job. Great. You were able to see that?
Yes.
Okay, so this was the tri-party agreement that we entered back just over a year ago in November of two thousand twenty. And it identified that the work that was needed to complete the subdivision, that's a relatively small subdivision, three lots, pretty small roadway, was sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars. And this was recorded at the registry of deeds, as you can see, as it should be. And we had an exhibit A that we worked out with the board and the town engineer. And Tim Wilson, Tim Wilson from the engineering department is who Matt has been working hand in hand on this. And, Mr. Chair, did he by chance, did Tim Wilson send you a correspondence this afternoon, or no?
I have not received any.
Okay, okay, so basically, what we had talked to Tim about was reducing the bond amount or the surety amount and extending the, you know, and to talk to you about extending the time. We're not, my client, Matt's on the, Matt's on the call, we're not really overly concerned about reducing the amount. It's a, it's a pretty, pretty minimal amount comparatively to other projects at sixty-nine thousand dollars. We just wanna really remain a good standing with the board. So, you know, I think we can proceed, Matt, do you agree that we can kind of proceed and, and talk about an extension without asking for a reduction?
I do, Brian, yeah, it's a minimal amount left in the.
And Tim Wilson was great. I think, I think he's actually had some COVID issues in his family, so we're respectful of that. There's not a lot of urgency to this to get it reduced, so.
I think everyone's dealing with a little bit of something right now, so.
Yeah, so we can, we can kind of take that aspect off the table, which, which kind of, I think, takes a lot of pressure off of everybody, but in any event, let's, let us give you an update on where we are with these items that were part of this. So, the drainage structure was the first item to be adjusted. That has not been done yet, because that will be done when the final code of payment goes on in the spring. That's when the structures will be raised to match that level of final payment. And the same thing goes with the sanitary structure adjusted. So we weren't gonna be looking for reductions on those. The stone, stone for the pipe ends was, has been completed, that's done. Gate box has not been done again, that's another adjustment before final paving. Hot mix is the final coat that will go on in the spring, so that has not been accomplished. The tack coat goes on first, so that has not been done. The granite edging has been, I think, Matt, what about eighty percent completed?
Yeah, it's eighty. I talked to Tim about maybe getting a fifty percent reduction off that amount.
We're not gonna go for a reduction anyway, so, but, so, but, so to give the board an update, what percent?
Except the five or eighty percent is a chunk left with that third lock string ago that still has to be completed.
So the house that hasn't been built yet, we have not put the granite there, because we just don't want it to get ruined during the construction of the house, right?
Right, yep.
Lone barrow and seating, that has not been done, right?
A lot of that has been done. We didn't even discuss that with him anyways, because the support hasn't, so it really wasn't worth dividing at that point, but some of it has to be done still.
Yep, the abreviate has been installed. So that's been done, and they're, and they're doing well. The red maples, you might remember, there's red sunset maples that will go on the front of the subdivision, there's a covenant on that, those have not been installed, because that. We don't want them to get ruined, and we protected that area. And the street trees have not been done either. The balance of all of these items has been completed. These deal with the plantings in the rain guide. So that's what the specs on, on all these, the cranberry bush, the spyree, the milkweed, daylily, cedar, cedar antum. That's all been done and accomplished. Now, in any event, Tim was, Tim really wanted to kind of see how those, how those hold over, and we kind of agree with them on that, because they were installed in the fall. So I think it's in everybody's best interest to see what happens in the spring, to make sure everything comes back after the winter, because they were, were installed in the fall. And then the retaining wall has been built also, so that's been done. So, really, you know, what, the, the key things that are gonna be done are gonna be, the structures are gonna be adjusted, the final payment's gonna be put down, the granite curbing will be done in, you know, in the spring, in the summer, and then, you know, pretty much to make sure everything takes hold as far as all the plantings go. So, that's an update. I think they've made great progress. I think there's been relatively few construction complaints up there. They've been pretty proactive, as I've mentioned. The tri-party agreement called for the work to be done in November, which obviously has not been completed. So we wanted to discussion, an extension of the time. And I think it would be a relatively simple extension if the board would, would agree. My thought was that we would request a extension till September one. And that would accomplish the following, it would allow the, it would allow everything to be completed, and it would allow the board in the town to make sure that all of these plantings make it through the summer, the hot weather. And then, the reason for September one is, if anything hasn't been done, if we come back for final release, and, and it hasn't survived, then we could, we would have time in the fall to plant. Versus if we extend it till, you know, a year, then, then you don't have time to, to get plantings in. So I, I just thought September one was good, because it would give the board and the town, you know, time to make sure that everything not only comes up in the spring, but it survives the heat of the summer, and then we would wrap this up in early fall next year. So that would be the request for consideration of the board. Obviously, if the board has other ideas on that, we're happy to attend.
That seems reasonable to me. Are you, would you need to record something again, or what's, what's the process here?
Yeah, I think what we would do, Matt, we would do an amendment to the tri-party agreement. I would work that out with Tom Mullen, with you, and then we would want, we would want the bank to sign it again, to make sure that, you know, that they don't have a way out, that they're, you know, they know everything's been extended. We would not reduce the amount, as I just got discussed, we just leave it at the sixty-nine. And we would just extend the date until September one, and Tom would review it. You would hopefully through your board be authorized to sign it, and then, as we did last time, we would record it at the registry of deeds, so everybody's on notice.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments, no questions at this point? All right. Does someone want to make a motion that we extend the tri-party agreement for Clyde Court until September first, twenty twenty-one, and to allow the chair to sign on behalf of the board?
So moved.
The move, but for twenty twenty-two.
Did I say twenty-one? Well, yeah. So amended, Bill, thank you. So. All right, that was second. Motion was moved by Jim, seconded by Bill, roll call vote, Theo Knoll.
Yes.
Megan Minasali.
Yes.
Bill Spalding.
Yes.
And Jim Hogan.
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, so.
Thank you. So what I'll do, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I'll do a draft, and I'll send it to town council, and I'll copy you.
Yep, that sounds good.
Either approve it or mark it up and change it, and then I'll forward it to the bank. I'll get the bank to sign it before you sign it.
Reminds me to sign it on my.
Oh, yeah, I, I would, Erin, I'm sorry, I, I would anyway, so. I didn't forget you. I know.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yep, all right. All right, we move on to item four. Discuss questions for potential future Lake Business overlay district. I know Bill Spalding and Jim had put together a presentation for us to review.
Right.
So, go over that, Bill, or how do you?
Sure, Jim and I worked over the last couple of weeks just to meet a few times to figure out what is it, what do we want to share and say, and to what level of detail do we want to add? But it's so important that we get, we have this discussion tonight with all of you to see how this works, because we all had a piece of this, like, in there, from Theo's comments to Megan to Matt, so should, you think it's easier for me just to share the screen? Is that the best way?
Um. Yeah, we can, you can share the screen, but we just want to note that we're just reviewing this at this point. It's not an actual, this is not the actual presentation, it's just, we're, we're doing, making, there's basically a working session here.
Yeah.
To edit this, at some point, we will be doing the presentation, and we will obviously publicize that we're gonna be doing it, so. In a most likely another forum at this point.
Right, and, I mean, I guess our goal is, this is our open meeting transparent version of working together in a collaborative way to make sure the presentation that we have for the public is clear, and the businesses understand what we're looking at, and the town understands what we're trying to do, so I guess that's our goal. There's some really good writing and pieces in there that, like Theo put together, and Jim and I have worked on that, I, I think you'll like, but I, there's a lot of room for improvement, so let me just share what was sent out. Jim and I were thinking, we're trying to get it a little earlier, but we didn't meet to finalize stuff until last night, so can you all see this clearly?
Yeah.
Okay, what I'd like to do is to run through the slides quickly, just as an overview, so you can see the whole package, and then we can come back to the main slide. So, yeah, if you see any spelling or anything like that, please let us know, because it was happening later at night, and our brains were a little fried, but we're having fun with it too, so. Here's the first page, and then we thought a timeline would be good, showing different points and parts of what this is all about. The mission statement pulled from some of the wording that the questions and Theo and that group pulled together. What is the Lake Business District, and what are we looking at, like, different areas, like, we pulled into map zoning? And then we thought it would be good to show, looking at the graphics, it's, it seems to work better with the overlay of the map and the satellite, and then have the little zoning piece off to the side, with just understanding what it is, without offering, and, and before it was offering, like, solutions and other things like that, so this is void of that.
So, Bill, one thing, I know you've got some markups on there, was that was intended, or?
No, that's from, that's just being lazy and not editing anything until we meet as a group to figure out what we want to do. That's from the original content that we were looking at as a board marking up as we're going along. I can pull new ones if we don't want the markups to be there.
And, and I think one of the other things to note is, one of the things we talked about, which obviously, we refine this a little bit more before we go to the public, public forum, is, you know, identifying what, you know, NB is, or B, for people, members of the public who aren't necessarily as in the weeds of what the zoning map is, they might not know what that is. And one of the things that Bill and I discussed potentially is kind of talking about, you know, having some of that information back up, what, what does that actually mean? What are some of the restricted use cases? Not necessarily in the body of the, of the presentation, but something that we would be explaining as we're going through some of these slides.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yep, so we have the three places. We have the northeast top of the lake, the northwest corner of the lake, and then down to the southwest corner, North Avenue Prospect. And then getting into the deeper information, and this is where Jim and I were like, is this too much information? But to help everybody understand what we're basing this, basing the information on, the table of use and the regulations explaining height and density, they, they become really important if we're gonna have serious conversations, educated conversations about what this is.
And just for the, the board, one, you know, this, that light blue text on the top were notes from Bill and myself trying to, kind of, trying to brainstorm what, how, how far into the, the weeds do we want to get with the presentation, and how, how do we balance that versus staying high level? You know, I think one of the things that we're, Bill and I kind of were coming in on is kind of talking about what are the types of things that you see in those regulation tables, but not necessarily pulling up and going through line by lines. I think you'll see the public's eyes start to glaze at that point. But, you know, kind of talking about, you know, what are some of the things that we're looking at in terms of mechanisms of if we do this overlay district, would that, where, where would we go to make this sausage, once we kind of come up with whatever the final product wants to be?
And this was a topic, and I like that Jim pulled this together, because it, it just came up, it came up as, in the conversation. I think it will help answer a lot of questions. We want to make sure this is all accurate, too. And that would be part of tonight, making sure that the information up here is, is right on. Then we switch gears to go into, what is the town saying? Where are we pulling some of this survey information from? And beside, putting aside our planning board meetings, we're looking at the Vision twenty thirty, and timing-wise, it was perfect that the final results and survey information was published back in December. We did slim it down, there was a lot of information there, but we thought, it's like, you know, Vision twenty thirty, if people are hearing this for the first time, what is it? A little explanation, and then a link to what it is, and, and something that Jim and I were talking about, we'd like this report, once we review it as a board and figure out what it's gonna be, we'd like it posted to our planning board, the town website, as a pre-read. That way, if anybody's joining the meeting, they have access to this before the meeting, if, if that's, Matt, if that's something you think is a good idea.
Yeah, that would be good, but, you know, if you're gonna do a link, I don't, I don't know if you want to put the entire web address on there, but.
Right, so we could do, like, here's the survey, and it would be, that link would be inside that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good point.
It, it just looks a little bit better. Like, so people aren't trying to click on their screens while this is going on and get the link to work, so.
Yep, did you try it? It does work.
Not my screen, so.
Vision twenty thirty, the vision statement, we felt this was a lot of information. We're not sure we even need the slide, honestly. I don't think we need, we're not here to explain the Vision twenty thirty, we have the link. So that could be another topic of discussion for us. Then we get into each part of the survey, that first meeting that got into, you know, what's the Lake Quanapawit, which is the one that really serves what we're looking at more. And it was about benches, restrooms, water fountains, and the infrastructure, roadway sidewalks. And the last one, walking distance gathering places, pop parks, recreation stuff. Oh, I thought that was the last one, okay. And the last one is create a network of pedestrian amenities that connect business areas. We took out the percentages, that was a good suggestion by Jim, because it was like seventy-two percent of the people and ninety-one percent, so we took those out and just left the strong consensus and minor consensus info. And maybe, Erin, that's a good question for you. Is it okay for us to just strip out some of the information from this Vision twenty thirty and pull in really what we need for our presentation?
Yeah, I mean, it's a public document, so yeah, I, I don't see if I'll do that.
And then pulling it all together, we thought it would be good to summarize, and this is a lot of the wording from Theo's comments. Just put it, pulled it together and wordsmith it a little bit. And then thinking it's like Lake District overlay discussion topic, so is, if this is where the meeting changes from a presentation to a discussion, we as a board should probably spend the most time tonight thinking about what this information is, what do we want to lead the public into a conversation with? We don't need to do it, we could do it with words, we don't have to have a slide for it either, but this was what Jim and I were thinking about.
And just from a high level, the, the way we were trying to think about this is, you know, last time we had a public forum on the Lake District, you know, I think all of us came away thinking that, you know, we had some people commenting on it as if we were talking about two hundred four hundred Quanapawit, so there was confusion as it relates to what we were talking about. There was, I think, ambivalence from people in terms of the business community, because they, they, they weren't clear in terms of what were the things that we're talking about, or what were the goals? And in terms of the public, you know, I think that there was also kind of an ambiguity as it relates to what we're really trying to accomplish. And so the way Bill and I were thinking about this presentation is trying to lay, lay out, you know, the, the goals and objectives leading into, you know, kind of a baseline of what do we actually have? And then, you know, what's some of the feedback we're getting from the community via the, the Vision twenty thirty, thirty comments? And then, once you kind of set, this is what is existing zoning, the goals of the, the board, and then you set out, you know, in, in the caveat about the zoning law, so people understand why, you know, we're incentivized to work with the business community instead of just imposing something by fiat. And then we say, okay, taking all of that history and all that background and kind of education component of it to the public, then you, then, then our thought is, okay, with all of that said, you know, what are the community members who are here? What are your visions as it relates to what you guys want to see out of a process, this process? And then, that's where we would open up and really solicit quality feedback, and, and hopefully, the thought being that hopefully that would set the table such that we'll get a little bit more robust of a, of a conversation that's focused on what we're actually trying to do.
My, one of my suggestions would be maybe instead of possible restrictions, to, to change the word of that, change it to something else that's, doesn't look as menacing. Because it, we're not necessarily restricting things, we may be limiting or, you know, scaling back certain things at certain, so I don't know if you want to change, maybe change that word from restriction to something else. I don't think anyone has any comments on that.
Yeah, we, we could get to that, Matt, too. I have the, I, I should have, let me stop sharing that, and let me start sharing the PowerPoint, because your screen. So I, I could make, I've been kind of dabbling in the back as we, we've been discussing, trying to get the other stuff done. So, the last slide just says, thank you. So if we jump back to the beginning and look at, you can see the screen, right?
Yep.
Okay, good. So we're fine with the first slide? Pretty basic, graphic layout, all that?
I, I might take exception to a zoning analysis, because I don't know if we're doing a zoning analysis here, we're doing kind of a zoning review. Zoning analysis is a little bit, you know, more intense on each parcel, so.
That might be. Should be zoning discussion.
That, I think that would be a little more accurate as to what we're doing.
Yeah. Timeline became obviously important, I think, to bring people up to speed to what we've done. So, summer of twenty twenty, friends Lake Quanapawit, petition for zoning bylaw, and then fall of twenty twenty, planning board hold a series, I'm not gonna read them all, but you can see it, if you think we should change any of this. Need to move it so I can everybody's faces are in the way. Am I not getting the pictures back? All right, I'm not worried about that. So, let me close that one, let me rearrange this so I can see without having to move things around too much, okay? So the wording here, does anybody have any questions about the timeline or suggestions on rewording anything?
No, I think it's good, and yeah, I, I think it's a nice takeaway that this is actually a topic that's been in front of the town and something we've been patiently considering for a while, and, you know, and not like, there's also no, not a sense of urgency, or, I mean, like, like, wanting to be very deliberate and inclusive.
Is the correct verbiage, public meetings or public hearings? Do we want to?
Oh, there are public forums, was how we were describing.
Yeah, they're not meetings.
Nice, okay. Okay. Public forums to review. Time, the board holds a series of forums to review current zoning, okay, that, that seems to read better. Like that, okay. Defines versus suggests. Do we don't want to wordsmith this too much, but. I don't want to wordsmith this too much, but if we're trying to keep this open for discussion, the word define might fall into the same category as analysis.
I don't know if we're actually defined anything at this point, we're you know. But again, I don't know if we're parsing too many words here, so.
Yeah.
I think suggest is a good, a good word. Alright.
It's, I mean, this is something that can go on all night. I just want to make sure that it reads in the same flavor.
Yeah, I'm trying to get to the point that we haven't really drawn any conclusions yet, we're still.
Right.
You know, it's just still an open pathway and we want input from everyone, nothing's been decided at this point.
Okay.
And you know, I've been continuing on that, I don't want us to come with any preconceived notions that we're going to do certain things, so.
Understood. The next page, I think we're good with this one. I do need to update this. And I have to figure out what happened with, this used to be a master page, but that for some reason isn't on the same thing as that anymore, but I'll fix that. In fact, I can fix it right now. Mission statement.
Do we need a mission statement?
I don't know, that's a good question, that's why Jim and I wanted to, we we wanted to pull the information that was gathered through the last few months and more to make sure nothing was missed. And if we do want to cut some of this information, it's totally fine. It felt like it needed something between timeline review and explaining what in more detail, the Lake Business District and zoning map information, is there something that we're trying to do, is this our mission? What are we trying to do?
I personally would advocate for keeping it and the reason being is that I feel it's a kind of setting the setting the goal early in the discussion in terms of, and I think we, I think we actually might have wordsmithed this two months ago as a board and beat it up pretty good. I think that we came to generalize consents as it relates to what the what the the high level goal of this whole process is. And I feel like it's important to keep the the public focused on what that is and to communicate that. You know, and frankly, I think I kind of think this slide is a little redundant with one of the ones that comes at the very end. But I think that's okay, because I think it's okay to have the high level, like this is our goal for the whole, this whole process to be some of that we hit people in the head more than once in terms of we're trying to preserve the character of the lake, because that's what we've heard from consistently from all of these discussions is everyone seems to be in line as it relates to that goal.
Yeah, I would agree, I think that's really valuable.
This is leftover from the talking points of the next slide. Is it the word, is it the title mission statement that might be too big?
Yeah, well, to me, a mission statement is, you know, everything we do is, you know, summarized in what our overall mission is, this is one portion of what we're doing, so. You know, if you want to put mission statement of this this task or something, that's fine, but it seems like, to me at least, you know, what's the goal of what we're doing here is a little more genuine instead of, you know, our mission is to get this done at all costs and that's the way, the way I read it, mission is like, we're gonna, we're gonna do this no matter what. So, but that's just my feeling on basically all mission statements, but.
I felt the same way, Matt, where it's, I didn't think it it might have been just too big for what we're trying to do is, is it telling? Yeah, is it communicating that this is what we're doing as a board? Adding zoning discussion in front of it, does that soften it or bring it back to just this?
We could also just say Lake District goals. You know, and just, or Lake overlay goal or Lake overlay vision or something to that, you know what I mean? So you're making it very clear what it's it's related to the Lake overlay. And it's, you know, a goal of that process or something to that effect.
So we've referred to it as Lake District. Mostly in, I'm trying to see. We've used the word district a few times along the way. So I don't know if that's I'm just flipping through quickly to see. District shows up. So it might be Lake District overlay discussion topic, so it does seem like maybe Lake District is the right verbiage.
Yeah, goals or guideposts. Yes, makes sense to me. Yeah, and I'm fine with with Lake District too, so.
Okay. Yeah, I think we all want to have goals. All right, next slide. Lake Business District. Find area by property.
We should delete the word business.
I'm sorry, here?
Nope, right here.
Just make it Lake District.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's, that's perfect, I like it. So Brian's raising his hand, Mr. Chair.
I do. This really isn't a public forum, so.
I'm sorry, I just, just, I couldn't resist it, I'm just wondering if I should say Lake Quanapawit District, because we have two lakes.
Good point.
Just a thought. So people aren't confused, that's all.
Just so much to keep typing, Brian.
I don't.
Thank you, Brian, that was a good suggestion, so.
Yep, I agree.
Again, I kind of want to avoid having this an open forum for the whole town editing this, so.
I like that, too, and I think then we're fine with using just Lake. I honestly, I don't like the term Lake Q. I don't know, it just doesn't, that's my own personal feeling. I'd rather type out the whole word instead of writing Lake Q, I do just like as we've referenced, Lake Quanapawit District and just having Lake here. If that's all right. Any suggestions to change the information here?
No, I, I like the, the fourth one, that possible options to improve business types and economic development that fits well.
I was thinking, we were thinking of Aaron, now this is part of, this is part of what we've had in there from the beginning, so again, this is such a combination of all the verbiage that we've been talking about in the last few months, years. Okay. So from this slide, it launches into the graphic part of it, where we have these three locations on the left. So I guess this is where we want to talk about graphics and we want to talk about how much do we show on each slide? When Jim and I were discussing this and Jim, please jump in, it was more about getting that information out there so it can be more focused on these areas that we've identified, but also give enough information so people can oh, there's honeydew donuts, there's the Gertrude Swalding Park. And here's the relationship of what the zoning is in that area.
And and honestly, I think the biggest thing is orient, orienting the public around the places that we're talking about. And then providing the the base level of education as it relates to what what the zoning is and what the implications of the zoning are right now. And I think the way that, the way that we were kind of going back and forth on it was, you know, I don't think we're going to sit here and list everything you can do and not do in a business district on this slide, that doesn't make sense, right? But at the same time, we're also not going to talk about it, zero. So there's, there's a continuum and it's how far into the weeds or how far do you want to go with the lack of education in terms of the public? You know, where I think I come down personally is having a list of what all of the different zones are on the individual map. You know, neighborhood business, business, and then we verbalize, what are some of the general goals of each one of those districts? And the, and then what that will do is it allow people to hear what those districts are without having you know, a bunch of stuff to read and they're really constrained in just understanding where we're talking about and what the the implications of that could be. So from a graphic perspective, what I'd advocate to do is we keep the the Google map as a larger one, we have the zoning on a component and then we have kind of a guidepost as it relates to what each of those individual districts that are on that that zoning map correlate to.
Yes, I I think that's perfect, and I think the slides as as they are is I think, I think they're, they do exactly that, so I think it's great.
And you might remember this one where I pulled together that table two with the dimensional regular regulations for limited business, for neighborhood business and did that little chart with a person, so to show different heights and explain. It's like, I don't think we need to go this deep and we did a lot of research in the background. And which brings up the question, should we remove the red markups? Especially this one, where it's talking about changing, you know, across from Vets Field, across the train tracks to that Elm Street laundry and auto body, changing that from business to neighborhood business. I feel that I should get rid of that.
What do you think? I would advocate for that as well, because otherwise people are going to think that you've got a Trojan horse of a proposal.
Yeah. How's everybody else feeling?
Yeah, I'd rather have some clean graphics on there without, without markups at this point, so.
Right. Got it, so for each of these slides, it's pretty easy to do, to get rid of that stuff. That's weird, it just kind of stays there, I thought it would stay on the slide. I, I, I use the I use the zoom markup and not, I thought, okay, forget it. It's been a long day, all right, I'll take, I'll make sure that's gone. Are these maps and the locations now that we're really sharing this, it's not confusing, right? Northeast top of Lake at Lowell Street, northwest corner of Lake at North Ave and Quanapawit. Simple description, southwest corner of Lake at North Ave. I don't have any, we don't have any north arrows in here, everything is just north is up. Matt, does it bother you that there's no north arrow?
It's not confusing to me, I I know which direction I'm usually pointed in, so.
Okay.
But I'm different than a lot of people, so, you know. Some people might only know it because they come down Prospect Street every day and expect to see things from their perspective, but.
Yep. I don't mind adding north arrows somewhere on each of these little plans, if that, you think that will help.
I don't think it's needed, but so it's up to you.
Yeah, I don't think it's needed, it makes sense to me.
Okay, thanks, thanks Megan. So then it gets into that question about how deep do we go? Do we need this slide or do we just talk about it? Then I guess the the side that I agree with that it should be there is that if we are posting this on our website for pre read, people will have these links to go to to research and go deeper if they want to know more.
I think we're, I think we're, my thought is that is that at this point, it makes sense to have we're going to be talking about it, but the problem is that, you know, no one wants to look at a table and then really to.
Wait a minute, I do. Just kidding.
Yeah. You know, I think to your point, it has more value as a pre read resource, but I think that when we get into the actual meeting, I, you know, in my mind, the way to do it is to either skip it very quickly, you know, basically talk about the content really with the map pulled up and then just click, click or to not include it.
Okay, I just cleaned it up, Matt, I believe that was your suggestion about, do we have those long links in there, is that what you had meant?
Yeah, yeah, it means much better. Again, if you I don't know if you have one posted online, if, you know, there's a link that can be, you know, a click here that you don't see. I don't think it, it works that way, but you know, visually, I think it's better to come off a lot cleaner, so.
Okay. So let's go back to the bigger question, do we want this slide in or do we think it's not needed?
I, I'm going to vote for keeping it in, because I think Jim's been really convincing and compelling about wanting to lead people back to these concrete ways of, you know, this is how zoning sort of creates these opportunities for what goes where. And you know what, you know, the the nitty gritty of the work ultimately is sort of picking what might go there and working with the businesses so that they're, you know, planning ahead and thinking about what what would be future and best uses that they want. So again, I agree with everything y'all have said about not spending a lot of time, but it's, it's, Jim's right, it's good to point people back to those.
I'm just looking up on the index on the E code. Yep, okay, I'll make sure it's working and pointing to the right ones and all that, too, links. We'll double check those. This is the last slide before we get into the vision 2030. Any the too much information or is this really an important thing to have? Should anything be bolded?
We've got an approved preliminary definitive plan.
So what do we want to have in there for wording?
That would be an approved subdivision plan.
Should subdivision have a hyphen, or is that okay?
No, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
But we may want to just go through and double check the exact wording of this from.
Yep, and that's what I want us to be careful. I know endorsed is the correct word for approval, not for A and R. And I believe approved is the correct for our preliminary or definitive subdivision plans. But is it the definitive subdivision? But is it the definitive subdivision plan that locks in the seven years?
I thought Plenary could do it too, to be honest.
Well, that's that's what we need to be sure of as we discuss it.
Yeah, that's why we gotta go through and look at the wording.
Okay, well, tonight's our time right now to look at this wording. I mean, I'm I'll Jim and I will pull together the comments from tonight and then we'll share it again with the board for a final review before it gets posted and everything.
All right, well, just mark this as we need to do a little more in-depth digging to get this correct.
And it's these two paragraphs that we're most concerned about, correct?
Yeah, I mean, you may want to change this to have. You know, you've got bullet points on Mass General Law. So for the for the first one, you may not want to have a bullet point on that, but just say in order to pre-zoning, you need you know, and then bullet the the ways you go about freezing it or locking it in.
Right.
So. And then I would take out the last one too. So parcel is not developed after special five durations. Because that's that's not a lock. That's you know.
Is that something that's important to leave in to? I don't know. It Jim, in your thought process, is this something important to have in there?
I think it, I mean, I think it's it kind of explains what the impacts are if nothing happens. You know, and so in my mind, the the reason why I was I added that is because in my mind, you know, I think that it's important to kind of communicate what what's the impact of if you lock zoning. You know, it it does revert. You know, I don't know if it's necessarily super obvious to people who aren't in the in the weeds of it, but if if people don't think it's appropriate or necessary, I can I can understand the the thought process to omit it as well.
But you can leave it in there. Again, I wouldn't put it as a bullet point. I would. This is because you're you're trying to list the things that would lock it. You don't want to put something that, you know, removes it in the same category. So.
Is it better served as like a note at the bottom?
Yeah, it would be something like that. So I think so.
But that, okay, that works for me. Jim? Okay. Cool. Is there anything wrong with the title of this slide? What is a zoning lock or is again, we want to provide the information for people who are starting to help with the discussion.
It's more zoning freeze than a zoning lock.
Okay. What is it? Is it referred to? All right. As we're looking at it, we'll we'll also look at this. Freeze is a good word for today. The word of the day, free.
Unfortunately, it loses your graphic, but I mean, I suppose you could leave that in there.
Oh, we could easily make this an icy cold lock. Right. Something else for us. Jim and I will rework this and look up to make sure we have this set up. And when we do the final, we'll we'll share it. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, now we're getting into the Vision 2030. And I guess the bigger discussion here is how much of it do we want to show? There is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven slides or so. Not sure we need all of it, but Jim and I wanted to make sure it was here so we can discuss and as a board figure out direction.
So just for people, so people know we're high level, you know, where my thought is is that I think it's important to explain what this is. I think it's important to take some of the information as early as the vision statement from it, but not necessarily have it being a slide. And then I think that there's you know, I think we aired on the side of don't delete that until everyone else looks at it and agrees, but just from my my standpoint, I think that's kind of where where my head would be. Bill, do you maybe we want to kind of tick through the the slides? You know, I think we kind of laid out where our thoughts were, but you know that other members of the board might not have seen exactly where what's in worse, what's out at this time. Yeah. So right here. So basically, we we start with there's a vision statement, you know, we we basically took this vision statement from the 2030 report, put it in here. You know, we think that there's a possibility this could either go away or at the very minimum, it needs to be slimmed up significantly, be a little more focused on this topic going. If we go to the next section, the we it goes into so these are some of the survey results. So protect and improve the special places and physical assets. So the survey results, you know, basically, we we thought this is a slide that probably needs to stay. It kind of explains the importance of Lake Quantapawet to, you know, what the feedback was from the community. You know, it's a couple of the few very strong consensus in the report or some of the strongest consensus consensus. I'm going to the next slide. It talks about add more comfort amenities with this in parks. This is one of the ones that we thought was a little more iffy if it could stay or go. Reason being is that, you know, I think everyone agrees that this is something that is a great goal. Not necessarily sure if this is a zoning per se, you know, and what we're talking about. You know, may you know, maybe you can make the argument that there are zoning elements as it relates to, you know, public infrastructure around the lake, but not necessarily, you know, if you're talking about used tables, this isn't quite as apples to oranges applicable. If we go to the next one, you know, talking about roads and sidewalks is another one where it's kind of a little iffy if we thought it it was necessarily applicable. You know, there's a basically the survey result said that, you know, Wakefield could and should improve its roads and sidewalks, upgrade pedestrian facilities again. Maybe more of a DPW focused conversation, not necessarily zoning conversation. But we'd be interested to hear in other members of the board and their thoughts. You pursue. Oh, go for it.
Yeah, you know, the zoning isn't gonna basically change any of that unless you somehow you know, require public improvements. So which I don't think we're looking at. So putting this in there may confuse people that if they vote for a zoning change, they're gonna get better sidewalks and streets. So you know, potentially, there could be some pedestrian walkways built along the lake over people's properties, but it's not necessarily going to change the roadway leading to it or around it. So I think maybe we want to take this out. So, you know, what no no zoning is going to change roadway sidewalk maintenance. So.
Right. And and I think that's what Jim and I were struggling with too. Do we really just want to have an explanation of what the Vision 2030 is and how it's it has impacted our board with some of the ideas and 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 what the surveys have provided for information. So is it simple enough to have this slide? Get rid of this one. But pull in from the survey results. We pull in the very strong consensus here. We pull in the strong consensus for desired comfort amenities and improved walking paths and trails because this start does start to play into if anything out of all of the Vision 2030 survey results. These are the three things that really hit on what I think our board can discuss and use as talking points for the discussion with the public.
I mean, the the vision work basically just justifies us working on changing the zoning. So I I think you just need to give it as you know, one of the reasons why we're doing this is because of this survey. And that's why we're moving forward with it. I don't think we need to get into a great detail about what people exactly want from that. And especially confusing it with with roads and sidewalks and bathrooms. Not what we're doing here is not going to change any of that. So potentially some walking trails around the lake, some pedestrian access on some of these properties potentially are some benefits, but besides that there's not much more. So.
Do we need to have it at all?
I don't want to speak on behalf of everyone, but I think this can be pared down quite a bit to just why are we doing this? Well, from survey that was done, this is what people are looking for. So that's that's one of the justifications of why we're pursuing this zoning change.
Prioritize focus. So I mean, I don't want to get too deep into this wording. But from the Vision 2030 efforts, our board sees value in the survey results to benefit our discussion and maybe that's it. Maybe, and I'm just writing that in here, but maybe it's something closer to this and Jim and I can work on a slide that incorporates some of that feeling with maybe two or three of the points and then just stop and maybe it just becomes two slides with a link to the full report if people want. Is that a good direction?
I think it I think it's an improvement.
Yeah. We were struggling with this for sure. We didn't want to ignore it, but we felt that it was important to have our board discuss.
I think I think it makes sense, but I'd be interested to hear what Theo and Megan think as well, just to make sure that they're part of that decision-making process.
Yeah, Megan, you want to go first or?
Oh, go ahead, Theo.
Okay, um, no, I'm I'm on board with all all of the edits that that we're talking about because it makes sense. I really do like the original slides 15 and 16. That
So.
That's the 13. The 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 you're right, the infill and then the parklet images. So I mean, we'll we'll get to those, but I, you know, I think I think we're we're, you know, we're cleaning it up and making it
Okay, and I'm I feel comfortable. Jim, do you feel comfortable working on these couple of slides just to bring it all together with the comments? And Megan, how are how are you feeling?
Yeah, no, I'm good. I think we should certainly mention it. I like the kind of pairing down the first slide and then seeing how much we can condense with these other vision slides.
Okay.
So what we'll do is we'll try to keep it super high level and just full points of major, you know, major part parts of the consent or the the survey that kind of helps tell the story as it relates to the priorities within the the district.
Yeah. It's probably worth looking at this slide as it transitions from the Vision 2030 information and it becomes our let's pull this all together before we talk about the discussion topics. So Jim, you and I, when we do look at the Vision 2030 slide, there might be something in here that we alter to to pull some of that information in possibly.
I I'm not sure. I think that this is one of another one of the ones that we as a board kind of workshop and I personally, when I go back and look at it, I think it's it's evergreen. I I don't think it interacts with the 2030. I don't I I said, I'm totally open to if anyone disagrees with that, but that's kind of my my, at least my gut take.
I like the words too. And I'm wondering if does this become too strong of a direction as we're having a discussion?
I hear your concern. The one thing that I I would advocate is I I don't think that it would make sense for us to shy away from the fact that we're considering creating a Lake Overlake District. I I don't think that's it's not. It's not a we are. We're considering it, and that's why we're having this process. I I don't know if if others think that that's too strong, but that's my gut take on terms of I think it makes sense to to be forthright that that's why we're not doing this.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, if we get a bunch of people that don't want any change, then we're not gonna try to go to time meeting with something that obviously isn't going to work. So saying that we're considering creating that is, I think, the right way, the right pathway. So.
Matt, can you define preserving the scenic quality? I'm just kidding. Back to previous meetings where we had those big discussions on views and scenic quality, I think I kind of like how the word scenic quality encompasses a lot of that.
Yeah, I mean, I I think the scenic quality is is long gone for a lot of it, but you know, preserving what's it's always like what preserving what's seen in quality. So we've got a massive Jordan's Furniture building you see across the lake. We want to preserve that.
It could be scenic to someone. It could be exactly quality to somebody's thoughts. Yep.
It's just so subjective that it's I think it's good to have in there because I think there are people who really do feel strongly that there's scenic aspects of it and there are people who disagree with that take, but you know, it's subjective and it's open to interpretation.
Yep. Well, that's why I can't. I'm excited to hear from the public on a lot of this too. Hopefully we'll get some good feedback.
And and you know, that can be one of the questions you ask. So we've got it in here, you know, we're trying to preserve the scenic quality. What does that mean to you? And if people say that nothing ever changed, you know, what I see now, I never want anything that ever changed from that again. I'm like, okay, well, that that might be your vision of that. But you know, might be good to tear down Jordan's furniture and put something else that I I don't know. So not again, that we have any say in that, but.
Do we lead with that? What is scenic quality? Yeah, that was, you know, I shouldn't have jumped ahead too far, but this is that slide. And as we're writing this up and I was giggling because of, you know, adding in, I remember your comment like, where is the shoreline is? Are we measuring from the middle of the lake? Do we like, how does a setback distance from what part of the lake? It's so hard to mark that. I guess with this slide, it's first we get a look at. I I guess with this slide, it's first we get a look at. What do we title these discussion topics or do they even need titles? So. It could just be a list of discussion topics without any.
You know, we could do is you could put possible zoning revisions. And then just list all of these bullet points in one list. We we're agnostic whether or not either one is a restriction or incentive or whatever. We're just saying. These are the thing, these are the types of things that we've looked at as potential changes to the zoning. And then people can say. That maximum width is is a restriction or they could say it's an incentive or whatever. We don't. We're agnostic, but we're just saying possible zoning changes and then you can get rid of the incentive component of it down below. And then now it just it all becomes just one bucket of. Items.
Right. And maybe that's actually.
Right there, Lake District overlay potential. Or potentially Lake Quanapawat district. Changes, something something to the effect.
Right, that's the first time I think we've put. Lake Quanapawat district in a line that reads. That reads. How strange, yeah. Maybe we just go back to that because that's what we've been using, Lake District.
Possible Lake District zoning provisions.
Maybe, maybe this is, maybe we're just thinking too hard. Maybe it's just discussion topics. We have all the information, we we have the slide for pulling it together. Is it just discussion topics?
Well. I think you want to steer a little bit discussion topics on. Potential zoning. Revisions or zoning, or you know. I I think you want to steer. Steer that a little bit more.
Oh, I agree. I think you want to have people, you want to focus people on, we're talking about a lake district. You know, these are the types of topics that we think could potentially go into that like district. And I don't think we want to shy away from, these are the types of things we're talking about. And I think if we just say like. Generalized topics and we leave it open ended, I I'm afraid that people are gonna wander into talking about two hundred, four hundred Quanapawat. This thing or that thing, you know what I mean? I think we want to say like. You know, all all of this stuff, bringing it together, here's the vision, and here's how we think. Here's some of the the tools in the toolbox to achieve that vision. I think we need to be forthright about that.
And he also said ear- earlier like Crystal Lake too, like Lake Quanapawat, I think we try to. Separate the two, right?
I think at this point, if you don't understand which lake we're talking about. We got, hey, we have an issue, but this is basically, this is the nuts and bolts. This is why we're here. We want to know, okay. From going forward, what would you like to see concrete with potential changes, revisions? And let's just get to it, so. Yeah, someone could take this slide and use it someplace else singularly, but. You know, all the discussion up until this point is we've kind of outlined exactly where we're talking about here.
Matt, this might be a good. If when Jim was talking about. Being specific and curating and this is our chance. To really facilitate the discussion side of this meeting. And if we could have this slide up during the discussion, we could pretty much go down one, two, three, four. Write down that list to keep the discussion moving. And on track, so maybe we do want to really take a closer look at this. Are there items in here that we do not want to discuss? Is there an order to it that we want it to be in? Do we want to group? These possible zoning changes here, I I guess this would be amendments to our zoning bylaws. But then there's questions in here, it's like. Just what are preferred uses? Like, how do we answer those questions? Because potential increase in density for adding preferred uses and I think there's just. A way for us right now to think about how do we want this discussion to happen with the public.
If I'm being honest, I feel like that what we should, I think what we should do is when this topic comes up. I think one of us should, you know, whoever's present presenting should just go through. You know. These are the things that we were talking about and here's how we would potentially do them if it's something the public is interested in. And then I I think that letting someone, you know, I think if we start trying to find like. We're talking about maximum width, then everyone's gonna raise their hand, they're gonna want to talk about maximum width. And then you say, okay, now we're talking about setback and then everyone raises their hand and it's the same cast of characters who want to say everything. I think we want to go through all the things that are being considered and then let each member of the public talk once. Because otherwise, it's going to be a number of repeat people and just added a lot of time.
Yeah, the one thing we found out when we asked people what, you know, what kind of changes do you want without any. Suggestions in front of them is that nobody comes up with anything. It's just like, yeah, we want to be, we want to be part of the process.
Right.
So now giving them. A little bit of what potentially could happen. And see how they feel about it. I think that's a better way to go at this point.
Agreed. So what should they be? What we have here is this. A good start, is it, are there some things we should take away? Should the questions be? Leading and educational or should they be just direct and more? Yes, no, close.
No, I I think. I mean, it's discussion, so we want them to be open ended, but I I would move. What are suggested preferred uses? I might make that the first bullet point on this slide, because that is getting. Yeah, that's what we are trying to get people to to sort of think about and what what fits. What fits together. And then, right, and like, like Jim has said, you know, once you've got that, then you do talk about with setback.
I think you put the density bonus right under, you say, you talk about what we talk about what are preferred uses. Then you talk about the density bonus. And then you talk about. You know, eliminate special permit requirements, that can go anywhere, but that might go well right there too, because it's a preferred use. And then you go right into, okay, these are some of the things in terms of, we're talking about positively preferred uses, things that are, you know, help. Owners, people to utilize the land to the highest and best use. However, you know, so these, some of the things that in order to protect those, you know, the scenic quality, whatever that means to anyone. You know, these are other things, you know, I think really the the art of this slide is going to be whoever's presenting. And I think you're right, Bill. I think that we don't necessarily even need to have like a thank you slide. I think you just. Linger on this for like the entirety of the discussion, because I think it's going to be a really good guide to someone who's. You know, think about people who don't look at the zoning code or hell, even like me, like I I've looked at it, but. It's hard to remember all the different things we've talked about without having gone and beat it up a couple of times. Yeah, I think it's really nice to have a list of like a menu, for lack of a better term, of the things that we're talking about. And I think that it's important that we even say like, you know, suggestions, you know, because I I we we want to make it so this is not a. Comprehensive list by any by any metric, and I think suggestions almost wants to be separate and apart and almost like a bold. We're not, we're, you know, this is not the list, you know, if anyone has any other suggestions, we are totally open to it.
Yeah, sorry if it's distracting. It helps me think to, as you guys are talking, to really. Move and push things around. This one doesn't seem to, shouldn't really be between those. It seems like there's a another group of, you know, direct access to lake for public use. Is there something about the scenic quality?
I think the problem is if you put scenic quality in there, that's subjective. I think these are all. Right, we, you know, preferred use is is a little subjective, but if you define what a preferred use is, it is or isn't. So you know, from a zoning perspective, and so I think that you almost want things a little more like. You can kind of hold on to them, they're more discreet.
I I would, I I think maybe move direct access to lake. As the third bullet. Maybe not.
Sometimes you don't know until you see it.
To be honest, I almost feel like it wants to go either before directly after the maximum with the buildings, because I think they're kind of both talking.
It is like building setback distance, direct access. I mean, it almost starts, does it start a new?
Yeah.
Direct access to lake and then we're getting into maximum with the same way. It's like what are preferred uses? And then potentially like what's important, direct access to lake and maximum with the buildings and setback distance affects that.
Yeah.
And maximum height of buildings within overlay district. Are there any other things that we've had? Lightings come up a few times, seating has come up, those aren't zoning things as much. I think lighting could be. Part of our zoning if we wanted it to be.
All right, I I I definitely think lighting, I mean, that that's 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 coming up a lot, that's certainly coming up. Currently with all the special permits.
It'd be like lighting limitations or lighting requirements, I don't know.
Well, part of it is, you know. Ped. Safety, part of it's pet safety, the other part of it is building and. Pollution side of of lighting, you know, like the whole lighting of the side of a building. That's not for safety, lighting a walkway to the building or and I think Matt had brought this up previously, thinking about. The context of the buildings and if the lobby has buildings, not the lobby, but balconies have outside lights that are just like bright into the. Face of people walking by or across the lake, they just become pollution, really. Sorry if I was. Not accurate on that, Matt, but I think it was, I think that came up before.
Yeah, but I don't know how we can. Put that into zoning though, that's that's a design standard or.
Right.
So.
That's why I was questioning if if it belongs on here.
I mean, you can leave it to the discussion and someone brings it up and we can. You know, if you even want to do that, but. I don't know if we want to be again, be putting in things that we can't zone, you know, that can't be in this. So.
Or do we start this as other suggestions? Is there? Maybe it doesn't belong in this group, but does it come under other suggestions as another topic and we start to place? Non. District, the Lake District overlay. Focus topics. But also open up something to allow for other suggestions.
I'm just afraid in thinking about, you know, how long this presentation is going to be and then getting the quality of feedback from the public. I think that if you allow someone to go on a lighting tangent, they will gladly do so, and if we, it's kind of. Marginal in terms of our ability to to regulate that, I think it's gonna be a potential to. To eat up valuable time where we could get other feedback that might be more pertinent to the topic at hand.
So are the seven bullet points plus other discussion, uh, suggestions enough or too many?
I personally think if you run through these things, I mean, I think that they're. I think they're very germane to what we're talking about, right? The the vision of this district. Is so that we're looking at trying to preserve the access to the lake, define what business, you know, what what I prefer uses. And preserve scene equality, you know, I think in terms of the things that we can actually do. In the zoning code, these are the ones that really seem like they're gonna move the needle. Like, we do have the 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 authority to limit a building height. We do have the authority to eliminate a special permit requirement. For a preferred use, you know, those are things that we are that are in our bird boards purview, clear as day. And so I think that keeping the focus on tho- those items is very appropriate, and I think that, I think frankly. You know, if someone comes out with a great suggestion, then then obviously think that it's something that we need to consider. But I think then in terms of like the ones that are very obvious likely candidates to be included. Are I think mostly there unless I'm completely missing something and that very well could be.
I like the list.
Yeah, I I think it's 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 pretty good. It focuses on the things that we can actually. Make a difference in with this, so.
Oh, I I do want to take a step back, you know, and and Bill, you can stop me if you think I'm I'm going off the trail, but. No, I think, I think, you know, I think one, this is great feedback from the all the different members of the board and, you know, thank you for, I know. We've chewed up an hour so everyone's time on this, but I think it's been well worth it, you know, I think from my perspective. You know, I I do want to take a step back and talk about next steps and. You know, I think, I think we're pretty close where, you know, I think that if, you know, between now and. You know, call it the next meeting or two, we could have something that's ready and push it to everyone else on the planning board, get it ready for a primer. Um, you know, do people feel as if we're close enough where we're ready for this public forums, so we can start that process, because I I personally feel like we are. And if we are, I think it makes sense to start trying to set some of those dates. And create some of the bones of that process such that if we do end up coming up with something that. We get quality feedback from the public and we do elect to to prevent or provide this overlay district. I I think we can keep, we can keep the the train on the tracks to hit a spring meeting. Or at least give us the abilities to do so if we have these public forums, you know, if I'm looking at this calendar. You know, our next meeting, which maybe not isn't the one we want to do, but it's, you know, the twenty fifth, but. I I personally think that if we set a public forum for February eighth. And set one for the twenty second, I think that's very achievable in terms of, you know, where this presentation is to what we have to do to get ready for that.
I agree.
Well, I I would hesitate to put a public forum when we already have a public hearing. So, I know for the eighth, we already have a scheduled public hearing.
That's right, that that, yeah, is that for?
That's for.
Stark?
Stark, yes.
Right, okay.
So I'd be in violent agreement with that. If I, that would be doubling up would be no good.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, if you, if we want to set some dates at some point. That would be helpful for when we get to the point of setting future other public hearings that we try not to. To double up, the 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 problem with. Especially public hearings is we need to post the date and time that we're going to do it at, so. I prefer to have those start off. You know, first thing. But then if you're gonna have a public hearing later on in the night. You want to basically tell people roughly what time to tune in, but if the public hearing goes longer, we're not going to cut that short. So. We really should have. Potentially just one of those each meeting is public hearing or forum, so.
Yeah, I I to be honest, I didn't realize that 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 the eighth was was a public hearing, so I I'm in. Violent agreement that the the doubling up is not going to be conducive to success for really for either. If that's the case, are we are we, we're clean on the twenty second?
The tension, I I don't know, we we need to, we're gonna need to set a public hearing. For a zoning change. But we're not going to really discuss that until our next meeting, so. Um, and that's going to be in conjunction with, uh, public postings and things, so. You know, there's some lead time that we need to set up for, so. I, I think the 27th should, we should be fine for that, so. If you want to do it for them.
I, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think if we get on the 22nd, then we can figure out as, you know, as, as that zoning change comes up, because that's another one, I don't think it makes sense to overlap. But we don't have to have like back to back Lake District, like we could have, if we get one on the books and we, you see what the feedback is, and then we set one for, you know, the second half of March, you know, that, that might be the way to go as well.
All right. So the, the 22nd, it looks like that is school vacation week. So, uh, is everyone going to be here for this?
Um, I won't be present in Wakefield. Um, I'll be up around 10,000 feet in, in Colorado. But that, I will still have a internet access, so it's possible, but I don't want that to be the defining factor. I think our board can present and have a discussion. With, without me being present, so.
All right.
I think that's the importance of having a good solid presentation that we all put together is that we could all speak to it and, and have a good discussion about it and the meetings are being recorded, so. Um, I don't want that to stop. Um, will we have a quorum?
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
And depending on my internet connection, I will be here.
Okay. All right, um. So do we definitely want to set a public forum for that night?
I would advocate to do so.
Yeah. All right.
So Matt, this is a public forum, not a public hearing. We don't have to post it, right?
Correct. There's, there's no posting for this, so.
Okay.
So I know that we don't have to, but does it make sense to do so to try to, to, um, to increase the participation of the public as much as, as much as reasonably practical?
Do what? Put it in the paper or?
Correct. Yep.
Oh, that gets expensive. And if you actually want to post it properly, you've got to do it, you know.
Yeah, so we'd have to pull that out of our budget, um. I'll talk to Jen McDonald, our communications person to see. If you could like post on Facebook or something, but yeah.
It, it, it's not inexpensive. It's, it's, there's a significant fee every time it goes into the paper. Someone's got to pay for the paper, so it, it comes up to a lot of these public meetings, so, uh, I don't think we want to just throw that around.
Okay. Yeah.
So.
And we don't have a huge budget either, so.
We're going to need to save that for our actual public hearings for this and potentially others we have going, so. Um, I, I think the best thing to do is, is yeah, somehow social media or would be the, the best way to do it. You can, we can write a letter and it can go into the paper, perhaps they'll post that, but actually doing a notice is, I think, sort of the question. So, I mean, can we as a planning board sort of write a collective letter to the paper? Saying, please come to this public forum, or is that? Well, that again is getting, you know, getting us all to agree on the wording and suppose we could do that, but we've got to get, that's got to get worked on too, so. It's, it's easier if, if one board member wants to post something. It's a little bit easier and just.
As, as that person, not as the Wakefield plan, but like Jim Hogan, member of the planning board is saying, please come to this meeting.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
All right, so, uh. I guess that's all we have for tonight on this, this topic.
I definitely have direction. I think Jim and I can work together to bring the rest of the slides to where they need to be and then um, share them back to the board through you and, and Susan, Matt.
All right, um, is this, uh, something you want to have on the agenda again for our next meeting?
Um, I think so, because if there are any changes or, um, things that we need to discuss again, yes, I think it could be on there. And then if we don't need it, we just can not, not talk about it.
Okay. Well, our next meeting is the 25th and, uh, I know I will. It, I'm still, I, I'm not going to say definitely I won't be available, things keep changing, but I think I need to, we need to plan for me not being here, and I think Megan also is not going to be available.
Correct. I will not be at the meeting on the 25th.
So there'll be a quorum, but there won't be, you know, all members there. So you guys can continue on discussing that. That's, that's fine.
Understood.
We do have a continuation of a public hearing for the 25th that was already scheduled. But at this point, it's a formality that it basically gets closed because we're going to have to have a, open a new public hearing for a basically the same zoning, uh, amendment that did not make it on to the fall. Town meeting warrant, or so that's going to go into spring town meeting. So, uh, basically what's going to happen next week, uh, their next meeting is it's going to have to be closed. And then at that point, probably set a new public hearing date. Which then Aaron can start pulling together the posting requirements to get it into the paper. I think it's going to be the same text as the fall one. It's just going to be rerun again for the spring, so. All right. All right, so this will be on for our next meeting on the 25th. Okay. I'm going to move on to item number five, items not anticipated by the chair. So I just brought up one issue is for next week, uh, or the next meeting, you're going to be closing out the, the scheduled public hearing we have in uh, scheduling and, you know, setting the date for a new one. It's basically, we're just setting the date, there's no discussion on it. Any discussion you want to have would be before you close the first public hearing, so. And then the other thing I'm just going to mention quickly, uh, we did get a request from the owner of Zero Cherry Lane to have, uh, our board again review whether they can go back, uh, to the ZBA and, uh, request a variance again, uh, on their, on their property, so. That, I'm still corresponding with, uh, town council on that to see our direction on that. So there's really nothing more I have to say at this point on that. Besides that, I don't have anything else, so I don't know if anyone else has any comments at this point. Jim, why don't you go first?
Um, where do we stand as it relates to the signage? Research that we all did right before the holidays, and I know that there was a potential petition for a, sorry, not signed, street cha- street name change. But I know that there was a potential, uh, street name that was being proposed and that the town council indicated that it was going to be the jurisdiction of this planning board. And we'd come up with, um, some research for a potential, uh, zoning change or, or really more of a rules and regs, if I recall, as it relates to that process.
So the direction I got from, uh, Tom Mullin is that, um, this needs to be a general bylaw change. Basically, a- at some point, there was a general bylaw about street name changes and it somehow has been, you know, purged out of the, of the current zoning, so we need to come up with a new one. So what would happen is the planning board would be the sponsor of this potential general bylaw, uh, amendment at town meeting, so. Again, at another meeting, we're going to get this set up and we're going to start discussing this. This is going to be another public hearing that we're going to have to have. And then we're going to have to sponsor this and at town meeting, we're going to have to get up and explain you know, why we're doing this and what the process would be.
Does it make sense, does it make sense to set that date or is that something that we don't want to do because it's not as pressing as some of the other matters that we're discussing?
Set which date, so?
Uh, a, a date to discuss it at, you know, put it, to put it on one of the upcoming agendas, just, I mean, I know we did a number, or I know, I know a number of members of the board did research and I think Bill has, is kind of the co-later of all that information. You know, I think it would be pertinent to, for other members to get, you know, whatever that file deliverable was and then to set whatever that process is going to look like. And I don't know if we've got a direction of when the town would like to see this go to, go, but if it's need, going to be need for the spring town meeting, we need to start progressing the ball pretty quickly, I would think.
Yeah, so what we can do is we can set an agenda item for February 8th for discussion of a general bylaw. Uh, let's see. Discussion of the planning board sponsoring a general bylaw regarding s- street name change procedures. So we'll, we'll put that on the agenda. What we can do is, um, the direction I had, as long as we have this, uh, an agenda item, we work out the details. Uh, and then we have a public here, you know, we post it properly, have a public hearing, get input from others in town, um, and then we vote on it, we're sponsoring it, we vote on it, then it, it would go before, uh, it would get put on the warrant. We would have to, I believe, once we get it set, send it to town council, I believe, for them to approve. I think, I'm, I'm not sure how that, since it's not a zoning change, the town council would really have to approve it. I believe, so. And then Tom Mullin obviously would want to run through this language before it goes to, so. So, yeah, we can just, we can put that on for February 8th and discuss, start discussions on that. And then I'm sorry, Bill, or Jim, is that all you had for that or?
That's all I had for that. I have one other topic, but I'll defer to Bill if he wants to go first.
I'll go ahead, Jim.
Uh, the other topic I wanted to, to kind of ask as it relates to the, I know there's been some questions between myself and Aaron as it relates to the guidance from the state as it relates to a multifamily overall, or multifamily district that's going to be required of towns. My understanding is that, that you have to provide within a certain proximity of, uh, transit station. So for our, our community within their two commuter rail stations, uh, a multifamily district where housing is as of right, there's a number of items and I know that there's a lot of guidance that has not been provided, but there's some deliverables in the summer, as I understand it, in order to maintain the town's ability to access certain state monies. Um, and so I, I wanted to le- least understand if we had thought about setting that process in motion as well, or, or you know, getting that on an agenda, because, you know, I think similar to Lake Overlay District, I wouldn't be surprised if there's a lot of process associated with whatever that would be, especially developments, a very controversial topic as it relates to housing. So I, I wanted to just kind of raise my hand and ask, you know, have, have we started thinking about when we want to engage in that conversation or what we even need to actually change or not change?
So can I chime in?
Yep.
I think there's a lot of guidance that still is coming out from the state. Um, I think I told you that Jim, like, we're still trying to figure out next steps. I think we just have to be in compliance by May or June 1st of 2023 or 2022, sorry, um. So I think Wakefield is actually ahead of the curve compared to a lot of communities. Um, we do have our mixed use overlay district already, not by right, but by special permit, which might change some things, so. I'm working with, um, Bill Renaud, um, Steve Mayo and, um, someone else in engineering to like, look at, we're going to look at the map and see what we have already, if we might already be there, um, but it's, there's just so many moving parts and I think the state's still trying to figure it out as well, so. I wouldn't jump the gun there yet, um, but yeah, I think we're, we're on it and we're working on it, so.
So I just, one, one, two things is, one, you know, I'm just talking about what I've read online. I don't know if other members of the board are even aware of this, this issue. I don't know if it makes sense to give an overlay of what, what has come out or hasn't. And then my second comment would be, my understanding is that there was some sort of deadline in July of this year. Is that not correct? Did I miss, did I misread that? It was July 23, you said?
No, sorry, it's July this year. So we just have to say we'll be in compliance or say we're going to work towards being in compliance, sorry. Um, 2022.
Is that something that this board needs to do or is that something that town council?
No, no, I think it's, uh, more from a admin part, um, not the planning board.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't want us to start getting into discussion and leading, um, potentially down the wrong road until there's, um, you know, until the town has gone through and analyzed exactly where they stand at this point and where we need to go forward, so. Having us start discussions, not knowing where we're at, uh, I don't think is going to be too helpful in the long run and just maybe confuse people, so that's why I'm kind of holding back on that until we get a little bit more direction. And obviously, uh, we'll be part of that because we're going to have to have a public hearing on whatever moves forward, so.
And yeah, we're, um, calculating the numbers now, like trying to figure out where we are with the percentage of housing we have within that, that, um, half mile or whatever it is, so, um, hopefully. Yeah, we'll see what happens. It's just, there's so many moving parts of it. It's just very difficult right now to figure out what, what we have to do, so.
And, and I think with, with the zoning change that, uh, the previous town planner got through, I think goes a long way to, to covering that, which, which is a lot more than a lot of other towns had, so, um. He was head, head of the curve on that and, and I think he, he set the town up in a good position, uh, just to meet this requirement, so.
Do, um, and, and maybe I'm overstepping my bounds, but do we have an idea when some of those numbers would be crashing? Does it make sense to, to have Aaron give a presentation to the board as it relates to, here's what, here's what the, the state guidance has been so far and here's, you know, what we're looking at, just to, for our own general aware. I said, I only knew about this because I, I came across it in the globe and then doing down a rabbit holes of, of research, because I was like, that looks, seems like something that might impact me and the board, but um, I'm not sure if other members have had the same experience where they're like, there's this thing kind of floating out there that, you know, it'd be just be nice to be smarter on it.
Um, I can do a presentation on, um, what, the thing is too with this is affordability isn't part of this, which I think is kind of crazy, um. And so SHI, if you guys don't know, subsidized housing index, um, is something that I keep track of, um, on a daily basis, especially for the ZBA, the number of affordable housing units we have. Um, so I can give a presentation on that if you guys would like, and then just also housing in general, like how many new multifamily housing that has come on, um, you know, our radar the last 10 years since Paul Revis, um, did this mixed use of really. You know, our radar the last ten years since Paul Revis did this mixed use of relay district, I'd be more than happy to do that.
All right. Anything else, Jim, or?
No, I I Aaron, I think that sounds awesome. I'll defer to Matt, obviously, but that that I know I'd be appreciate being smarter on it before any of those types of conversations happen. But thank you. Thank you for for educating me on what's going on.
And then happy to send, I'm more than happy to send, sorry, I just heard a kid thought they were asleep, they're awake now. Um, I'll be more than happy to send you some information as well.
Um, all right, Bill, did you?
Yeah, I just had a quick, I'm just wondering the status of the master plan, just. And if, I don't know if we hear from Theo, or I I guess my comment would be is how does that reporting come back to the board once that goes in full swing?
I'm going to defer to Theo to see who he is on, but we did have our first advisory group meeting.
Yeah. I I can really quickly say that it was terrific. I think all all the members of the advisory group were there. The process is over eighteen months to have five advisory group meetings. Sort of built around and in between four public forums and the public forums. Like Vision twenty thirty have a three-week public survey that follows after those, so it really is. All designed to be a very inclusive process of soliciting feedback, and the role of the advisory group. Really is to. Sort of help that the survey questions and the the discussion topics in advance of the public meetings. But also, I think, to do what a board does, you know, help get the word out, connect with. Super connectors like the the M A P C talked about. And I think really keep sort of the momentum for all of this discussion. And again, making sure that the planning process remains clear, accessible, transparent, and inclusive. And. And Dana, he said this at the town council meeting yesterday, like, we've, we've really got a great advisory group. I, you know, we saw their resumes and. Such a great skill set, such a great diversity by. Experienced town tenure, we've got, you know, we've got the student everything, so that's, that's really outstanding. And what is really exciting is building off of Vision twenty thirty. So that that really puts us forward. I I know the the next steps, one of the next steps is circulating some master plan examples to help people get. Sort of a little more acclimated enough to speed, but, you know, in the advisory group is. Zoning board member who's also an attorney who's got. Master planning experience, we've got another land use attorney in the group. And so that there's another advisory group meeting before the next public forum. And that public forum would be April or May. And that's going to be on zoning, open space and recreation, and the the forums are designed to hit the eight, you know, two topics each forum. That feed directly into the the master plan. The. The, for me, the takeaways. I think we we might want to consider, A, because, you know, share the joy, it really was a delightful. Discussion and folks are really bought into it and really eager to participate and. You know, Aaron and Carlos and I'm forgetting the other guy, did a really fabulous job of facilitating the discussion. People are. Already contributing a lot, so. I think we might, when we get the the dates for the next, the next meeting, we might want to consider. You know, based on folks' availability, another planning board member participating, really, it's. Because you got to share the joy is is really, I think, part of my thought, my thinking. I I had a couple takeaways from it. The it did reinforce the need for collaboration between us, zoning, ZBA and conservation commission. I think. I was really curious to know how the municipal vulnerability plan and process might. Inform some of our our reviews of things and that that isn't sort of might be another tool that. Could contribute to some of our analysis. So. And I, you know, I right, the the other takeaway is us waving the flag and and doing everything we can to, again, make, you know. Keep it, keep the momentum, keep it clear, transparent and inclusive for for the public, so.
Yeah, I'll just add to that. It was a really great conversation that I think we all had at that meeting. I really enjoyed everyone's input. Overall, I just, it was a good first meeting. I thought, and a lot of new people that have not been involved in any sort of things before, so I think that's really exciting. Um, but, yeah, it's, I'm I'm excited for the process, so just want that that.
So, and do you think by our next meeting, we might have some dates? Because that that would be.
Yeah, I would assume so, yeah.
Okay. So so we we can revisit who might be available to participate in that.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah, I I was sort of on that vein. I don't know, I, so I'm sorry, I'm talking over you, Matt.
No, that's okay. Go ahead, Theo.
Yeah, the only other flag I wanted to wave was town council approved the final Vision twenty thirty. Yesterday, and. They actually had a really. In informative discussion when they got into talking about the high consensus goals. And there was a little back and forth, so I would encourage us to listen to that discussion. So if if you if you didn't hear it already, I think it just does. Yeah, give a little flavor for how some of this might play out and things to think about about, you know, few. Future community discussions.
All right, thanks. And then there's only one other thing I wanted to bring up, the. Potential or the the revisions to the A and R in the subdivision. Regulations. Again, those are going to be scheduled for a future meeting. I I have not had any chance to get into any of that yet. Again, I plan on starting with what I see for the A and R, which is pretty minimal. The. Whole subdivision is going to take a lot more involvement with DPW and engineering to get all of their. All their suggestions in there.
Right.
So basically, they're going to go, all of the. Waivers that we grant for all the typical things, if it's if it's a new design standard, we're just basically going to update that, so we don't have to keep waving. Normal things. And then for me, what I'm also going to do is. I think I mentioned this before, Paul Revis went through and compared our last published. Rules and regulations book that a lot of our, the people have been on here, well, I think it's just Bill and I now. We used to pull this book out at every meeting and go through it, that all went on the E code and. The the translation, there was a lot lost in that. He went through and documented. What needs to change in this, so I will be sending, and he's put it all on a PDF. I will, at some point before that, I'm going to send this out to everyone so they can go through and see what he's. So what the E code looks like and what our last documented. Book look like, and and there are changes in there that have evolved without actually being voted on or approved. It's just the way a person had a. At E code typed it in, unfortunately, so there's some stuff that really needs to be corrected. What we need to do is actually make basically a book again. That is going to be on file at the town town clerk's office, and that's going to go to E code, and they're going to hopefully put that in correctly, and then we'll get this all straightened out, but. This is going to be some of the processes, it's going to be a little, it's going to be an involved process. But it doesn't need to go before town meeting or anything like that. We just need to have a public hearing on these. And then we vote on it, it's approved. It gets documented with town clerk and then goes to E code, so it the the process here is. Is basically all within our control, which is good, so. Again, I'm going to get those scheduled kind of meetings coming up, so that's, we're going to have a lot of. Of forums, public hearings, other meetings that we're going to need to schedule over the next couple of months. It's really not much time when when you're talking for four, six meetings and, you know, it goes fast, so. As as long as every day seems to go at the end of the week, you're like, what what happened to? All the days this week, so I'm sure everyone's experiencing that, so.
Is there, is there anything that you need to, you know, it sounds like that's a pretty heavy lift, and it sounds like you're kind of bearing the brunt by yourself. Is there anything that you can, you know, delegate or offload to any other members of the board? You know, I'm sure that, you know, this. If I can, I'd be of help, I would, I would try to be.
Well, again, when I send out this this document that Paul put together, that's going to be pretty telling for the A and R. Rules and regs. Basically, we just redid, we we rewrote these, I think it was a year and a half ago. And I basically. Did the bulk of that, so I I'm pretty familiar with those. I deal with these things. Every day, so it's easier for me to go through and and. You know, as I read through it, I I see the level of effort to do some of these items, so. For that, it's pretty quick. When we get this big book and we go through it, that's when you can start dissecting a little bit more. And then doing some research to see if how other towns do it, and if they have a better. Easier way of doing it, then we may want to, you know, look at doing that. I do caution you that when you get into subdivision rules and regs, it differs greatly from every single town and. The amount of stuff that you would like to see in there might be nice, but there's also a cost associated with. Basically, everything that you add in there, someone's got to do the surveying, the engineering, the analysis. In order to get this work, so. I'm kind of mindful of putting things in there that you don't want to run the cost up of someone to. To do something that's within their full right to do, so. So. All right, if no one else, anything else? I'm going to move on to item number six, the German, so. Anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. This is a really great meeting. Thank you for this discussion, so.
All right, thanks. There were seconds?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Megan Minasali.
Yes.
Bill Spaulding.
Yes.
Jim Hogan.
Yes.
Theo Noel.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, everyone.